Okay, everyone, it is six o'clock. We have a forum. So like the call to order for regular meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for November 20th, 2025. We have a forum, we have any updates to be done?
Um. No, we can go as always.
We have the minutes from November 6th, everybody on the board is okay with them?
Yes.
All right, so.
We do not have our.
We still have open the public hearing for Route 1105, Route 28, which is a proposed gas station on 28. We kept it open because we're still waiting for some information from DOT. But if there's anybody here for that case, we'll hear it. Otherwise, it will remain open until we hear otherwise. Okay, we have a sketch plan review.
We have a problem. Are you for Berserkers or just Lizzie?
Lizzie.
Okay, so we can go through Berserkers and see if anyone shows. Um, we don't, we won't have one.
So let's get Berserkers done.
Okay.
Okay. Our sketch plan review is for Berserkers LLC, Special Use Permit 25-0389, and Special Use Permit 25-0700. This is the third sketch plan review, our site plan review, and Special Use Permit application to redevelopment of a site to create a 17 roof hotel within the HD zoning district located at 39 Mill Hill Road in Woodstock. The reference around 40 and, uh, everybody mind Dr. Eggers, Barry Price? So guys want to come up and tell the board what's new? Okay, Ryan.
Yes.
Thank you for there.
Yeah, you know, everybody, therefore, this is a place set of plans. Eggers, um, this is intended to be a site plan review by the Special Use Permit申请人, a 260. And that's the hotel. And there really aren't other legal issues involved, we don't require any caveations. I'll pass it over to Barry to just description.
In terms of new information, it's, it's survey. And it's, you want me to go over things that were reviewed before in terms of the site plan? I have nothing new.
No, in fact, the last thing to do was CCD, which is all of the time.
That's been done, she's supposed to be done. We're good to go there. Just have DOT outstanding, that's really the only outstanding issue.
And we try to get that back.
Yeah, we're trying to work.
Yeah.
I, I hope not.
Make it within the resolution. DOT tends to work with, yeah, and then we'll be able to go.
Yeah.
Is there anything else on that?
No, there's no.
Things to be added?
Uh, there's no other legal issues involved. Uh, we just really want to walk through the site plan quickly with you.
Okay.
In spite of your concerns or concerns. Trust, you know, trade issues and other issues that are appropriate to.
How, how does that work? Is it going into the calculations and into the, um, where is your board ring, your storm work going?
It's gonna be pouring out to catch please enough, Ron, there's enough. And, uh, one.
Get this in there.
Yeah.
Okay, as far as, as far as the form we're going into, catch this on the street. Okay with the highway department.
Well, that's, that's the problem that we're, we've communicated two months ago and we haven't heard anything back.
We communicated yesterday.
Yes.
For him, I just need some part of your picture.
Board members, any questions?
Was there anything last time that you were asked before?
The last thing with the CCD.
Honestly, last time you guys were ready to choose schedule publicly. Time before that was CCD, but they were working on one or three parts and just cleaned up some final things. So they wanted us to give them some time just to do their due diligence. So you were, you were there.
Before we said.
All right, signing.
Sorry, exactly where the science should go, but I mean, there's a, it's within compliance.
Compliance, it's in, right, so.
It's funny, it's down the, on the building, not out. You have a sketch report. And I mean, elevation.
Yeah.
And lighting is all dark dark appliance?
Um.
The question, maybe the main entrance is actually in the back. It's in the parking lot. Yeah.
It's a process, right? We would basically move forward with construction joints as soon as we're approved. It's pretty extensive, and once that, we'll put it out to bid.
Board members, questions?
Like problem with that Mill Hill Road, why even construction?
That's what you should, I mean, we can have a barrier in front of the sidewalk.
Would be during the summer. Maybe I'm like.
You know, yeah, like the building, but you know, um, construction is an animal of science.
But a lot of your equipment is sitting in the parking area.
Yeah. Yeah, we also.
In terms of staging. We're gonna be analyzing the building. Reduced determine structure. Do you think that's wrong?
That's a perfect scenario, you know? It's possible with this, with the plans that we have with the planned construction.
I mean, in terms of disruption, much less than that. I mean, it's, it's a lot of construction, all the interior finishes, so the heavy, the heavy stuff. Certainly not. This should be panelized, so we don't have to.
Any other questions? Three? Well, I think we have everything complete to go to a public hearing, we'll be attending the highways, the community of stormwater. So, uh, instead of those public hearing time.
I might settle with you.
Yes.
During all that, yes, we might go over the, uh, public hearing problem.
Okay.
Beginning. Okay.
There's three, every year, there's a three.
They're great, but you can add them if you want. These are the ones that I have. Well, if you're top of your list, by the way, thanks for your. Dom, so.
Now, okay, we'll finish the session.
Then, yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, so we're also global member Berserkers. And then, so for the next Lasher House complex, we're gonna lose Reagan because Reagan is accusing himself.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, guys. From his application, so I have a member on this right here, which is on the balance on this right here. So we're just waiting on that to flip the tables. But I'm gonna try to utilize my time as much as I can on this side of the table. So we're putting that on the.
Okay, what about your last piece for this one?
Yeah, or.
By the way, just to clarify, you're not voting on this project.
I'll, I'll go through all of that and, I, I got all that and more.
Okay.
You can, you can fill in my sentences. Is Roderick here yet? Of course, he was driving from the city. All right, um, I'd rather save my precursor for when it's us and they're there. I have a little bit of things that kind of happened and went into the mix with this. We're not gonna review Mountain View Parking Lot as of right now, I'll pull you in a little bit more on that. That's not wrong. Um. Okay, let's see. Fun. See, the mover lay a map, we're working on getting those done.
Yep.
So what are we looking at next?
Um, we're, we're stalling. We're on intermission.
Well, that's he can't follow it.
So it's gonna be last.
His wife's driving him.
It's gonna be Lasher property.
Thank you. Yes.
First, we want to move to the table.
Sure. Oh, it's stalling. Sure, but I never push anyone with my eight, remember stalling, right?
So, St. Street, library, library, that's the big Victoria's front, the old funeral home, 106, St. Street. And the news hall, that's gonna be.
I think we got a picture of that, it's okay.
So, Ryan, I have a double header, right? You have a double header for me?
Yes.
That's for the people who hate it. I'll be right.
Mr. Iker, right? Right. Good to be all.
Oh, we were recording. That's.
Would you like to see it, it's concealed, I'm not wearing it. St. Street. This is the existing. Library, library, two bombs, but it's, one of sixteen. And usual, that, that, that's a, the J, and all of that. And that's the most recent, this one's, that I have. Yeah, but I, I don't, I, I can't get, you know. What I can actually download is get off.
Yeah, that one's.
Updating on our, it's possible.
It's not. That is a hearing. That's probably cute. No, he was with me, so, yes. It's. And let's chase, chase that.
You are shining as you were playing.
And this here is very interesting. Yeah, I don't know, it's great to talk about.
Well, the greenhouse, it's a connect, connector, it'll have the bathrooms in it. If it's a greenhouse, this is a regenerative project, we wanna grow things from the cafe that rose.
Stop talking, I just want to see.
No, we wanna wait for the apartment, those are good.
This is the existing Blackberry, the existing barns, with a new greenhouse, the existing studio, the, the, there's the piero home.
Yeah.
And existing house. And the existing house next door. So those are new, but that's just a, that's just the forms, you don't need to really talk so much, but it's the idea that it'd be. Uh, affordable housing.
So just, just to be clear, when I was looking for what everything was, this stuff is on the Black Cash Bureau. Are you picking that stuff up? Or is it only this stuff over here?
It's not. It doesn't.
No, that is actually. He owns the slant back there.
Okay, so it's, it's the front and John's on St. Street, basically.
Yes.
Yeah. When I can't get current tax parcels. Looks like I can't. Okay, so I have labeled this only stuff.
This is a weaker one, yes, we're trying to show something.
We are, actually, I'm, you're gonna come up, but I'm. We didn't pick two out.
Yeah. So, so the one that you just bought is over at this corner here?
Yes, that's right. Uh, no, it's this one. So this is the Victorian house, and this is 106. There was always, the whole property was under Peterson values. And then they sold it off. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. So I actually did. And that is number one.
So what we actually have to do about this, just give comments up?
I'm gonna give a whole school of words.
But we are like.
Literally for, if you want to go out. If you would like, that would be lovely.
Cause she's not gonna.
Learned some things yesterday about.
Mapping.
More things about the mapping, yeah. I would care something else. Be made properly. And when something doesn't be made properly, I think well, that's for your sake. Maybe I can, but.
You should get that invoice in the mail soon, too.
So I haven't gotten the, anything that's inside the paper.
Did you do it at the end of the month, so?
Loving most complicated software.
And that's the new one, isn't it?
Oh, it's much worse than the old one. Somebody, somebody there said to me, it's good that I learned the old one because I know.
At least you could take the tools, right?
But figuring out how to do this.
We're gonna give a round of applause to my hero. And the forum. Reagan's gotta flip sides. Hey, guys.
I didn't agree. Oh boy.
You can test if you want.
Have to do a surprise party?
That's the tour.
Okay, so again, I want to thank everyone for your patience, I appreciate it, this is my life on a forum status. Mr. LaValle is here for the Berserkers case, Reagan flipped sides.
Not for Berserkers, this is.
For Lizzie Van, yes, okay, Berserkers is done. So, um, on my agenda, there was a few things, we had last minute cancellation, and then supervisor McKenna had sent an email to us asking us to review Mountain View Parking Lot. I actually got some phone calls this morning, and we were asked to not review it because it's not ready to be reviewed, not from supervisor McKenna, some other people. So we're not talking about Mountain View Parking Lot, affordable housing, we're only talking about Lizzie. And the Lasher complex, we'll talk about the other stuff later, thanks. I think that's settled, right, Ron? Any additions?
That's it.
Perfect, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, we all, and.
Let me open this case up. This is a presentation for Lasher House Complex, Thinker Street and Library Lane. Presentation by advocate, applicant attorney regarding town board referral for report on minor zoning map amendment application to town board.
But I don't.
All right, just want to announce Reagan is repeating himself, and he's went to the other side of the building, so it's, uh, to the single, and it's on her.
Okay, so let me just go over a couple procedural things first. This has been referred to the planning board by the town board, right? Just to show this matter, they'll make the final vote approving or rejecting our application for minor zoning district line amendment. And so what we're here for tonight is to make a presentation to you, and to refer any comments you have. So public hearing, in this case, the public hearing will be before the town board, but once we get to that.
So exactly like, thank you, Ron, perfect, um, yes, this is just where the town board wants your opinion, you know, sometimes the laws and stuff, this is similar, so this will be for your opinions.
Right, and this is all, I have sent a copy of Article 8 of the Woodstock zoning law to each of you in the package, so you can see how procedures lay out in the Woodstock zoning law. And this affects two of the lots, of the three lots that are depicted in the plans. And the reason we're asking for this, this is requested zoning amendment, is from anomaly in the existing town zoning map. The district lines for the habit commercial, habit residential, zoning districts run directly through the Lasher House property and splits the library properties.
And all of that, right?
And, and, oh, yes, the, the thing is that these properties were developed decades before the zoning ordinance affected Woodstock. So we look at this as probably a drafting note for not having the zoning boundary line on the northernmost edge of the existing properties. As a matter of fact, the existing zoning district line runs right through some of the buildings up there. So that's an anomaly, and we're here to attempt to correct that. Uh, and that's set forth in the motion to have a trial. Uh, the red line is the line depicting where we would like the zoning district line to be moved. So we wrap around the northly portion of the Lasher House property and the library property. That's about a hundred fifty foot movement of the zoning district boundary. See that?
So let me ask. Why create the, the whole, um, the one that used to be? I see two properties, this is one. One above it, I'm not sure if this is both of those or just a little.
No, it's, it doesn't, it's our that right lot, it's to the left.
It's just this one.
Just that.
I wrote it. That's all, uh, yeah, that's not a property property.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's why I asked, because this was a little confusing where that line. Okay.
Yeah.
No, it's gonna stand the same.
So, so one of the things that we want to discuss as well is that this is in conformity with comprehensive plan. Totally supportive, 2018 was that comprehensive plan. I have a copy of the comprehensive plan here, if you look at it, I can point you to specific pages of the comprehensive plan. Where they recommend affordable housing, and below, and they discussed the low availability, availability of rentals in the town on page sixteen. They talk about the need for more tech startup firms, healthcare services firms. But these are all things that we're contemplating when we come back to site plan review, if you, if you make recommendation to improve it. On page twenty four of the comprehensive plan, they talk about walkable communities. This is in town, this is within walking distance of all the amenities of the town. It also talks about promoting multi-family and mixed-use dwellings with commercial and retail stations on the first floor, rental on the second floor, which is also part of our concept for this development redevelopment. And importantly, on page forty three of the comprehensive plan, it specifically talks about shared workspace business incubators, which is also a part of the visions for the property. And so this supports with the comprehensive plan in every way, supports it. And, uh, we think that this is a project that will be a very positive improvement to that property and to the use of the property in the town. And Lizzie's wanting to speak a little bit more about her proposed uses and vision for the property and how it fit into the, can we?
Thank you, so, uh, I guess I'd just start by saying that at the moment, the HR line that runs through the front of the library, through the barns here, and through the funeral home. Everything to the north of that, which we can now try to move it to HC, is not residential. So what we're proposing doesn't impact on change of the current use of any of those buildings. So that, that's an important point, if we're not.
It's about what commercial.
It's, it's in habit residential, but it's commercial building, so we are just trying to, as Ron said, just rightly in normally by moving that line back to the comprehensive. And for those of you that know what I've done in the past, you know that I'm big on recycling. What I'm trying to do here is recycle some buildings, so a library that is no longer a library, because they're now established on the fix and, and the. We grew that a lot, they're not there, it's been empty now since beginning of September. And a funeral home that's no longer a funeral home, because there's just not enough of us dying. So we have to go to service if we want to die, so that's why these buildings are empty, and they've been empty from their original purpose for, I think, five years now. This whole piece of land was owned by the Peterson family, and then it was sold off in small parts. And just this morning, purchased 106 St. Street, uh, which is the remaining part of Jennifer.
Which I will highlight to the people who.
Yes, so just. So that gives us, how many acres here? We now have four acres from Library Lane running up to St. Street. And why did I, why these one? Because, who knows, it was very controversial, a couple of things were exposed, the potential use of the library, the potential use of the Lasher property. And why did I, why these? Well, because, I don't know, if it was very controversial, a couple of things were exposed, the potential use of the library, the potential use of the Lasher properties. And I've lived here for twelve years and wanted this to be part of the heartland of Woodstock. I felt very strongly that this is a really important town architecturally and in terms of the philosophy and the underlying reason why we're here. I put the buildings to be used for the right purpose. So the comprehensive plan gave me that, gave me a key to what was needed. And we've really spent the last two years just talking and listening and talking, listening, reading and talking and listening. And that's why this is the stuff which just matches the comprehensive plan of what our plans are. Uh, I hope that we've not proposed anything that will make people feel uncomfortable. I know it's with stock and there'll be differences of opinion, but you see on this amazing model that Chase and his colleagues created. There are a lot of trees. I just want you to know, I know how controversial trees are in Woodstock. Trees that are alive will stay. There are two trees that are definitely on their last legs and are non-natives, non-local trees. They will come back. And we're planning on planting forty-seven trees on this property. So the net gain is forty-four. Two, can't remember, but it's something like that. So a net gain of trees. We are going to create a beautiful, sustainable park here using agriculture principles, which will involve creating new ponds, which will go through this. To just fit in with the natural, the natural geography of the place. And then what are we going to do? Well, we are going to repurpose the library as a workspace for people that can come in and use it. And we're setting up an incubator fund there that will encourage businesses to start and to grow. We're going to put some funds into a sort of loan fund for small businesses. The back, where the hook on is, we are proposing to create housing. Two, three, four, four, possibly six units of housing in the back, a little bit smaller.
So that's new construction?
It's within the existing apartment.
Yeah, I'll bet it, well, they're all wired.
During the process.
Okay, so it's new construction on the existing.
On the existing.
That's fine. Great.
And low cost, which I know is also a controversial subject. What do we mean by low cost? What do we mean by affordable? We are working on that. This is all being done with recycled money. This is not being done with borrowed money or saved money or grants. It's being done with money that's time recycled. We'll leave that later. Uh, the barns, we have various uses proposed to us and we don't know quite what that's going to be yet. But we're proposing connecting the two barns with a greenhouse, a glass house, that will, uh, have the services that the two barns need, that will also be a cafe. Because it's gonna be right underneath this park. Uh, Victorian house in the front will just be renovated and made much warmer and greener to sustain as well. 106th and Street. The studio barns, the old funeral home, was, uh, is in bad shape. It was always built, I think, as an afterthought with additions added on. And it's very far to make that building work as a green building, to call this green, that's our energy. So this will probably be replaced. Want to come and see it? I can show you why. And then what we'd like to do is build some more affordable, low-cost housing on the back of 106. So that's what these, uh, rectangular boxes, just there as placeholders at the moment.
One.
Sorry.
Three units.
Uh, these will be three buildings next to each other. Uh, if both had six units of housing, that's about, sorry, each building would have two units. And one of the benefits we see to the DOT's plan for the town is that we take away the curb cut that currently comes into the Lasher property. And we use instead the curb cut that's coming into 106 and we bring the traffic through and put it along that, which will be totally, um, shielded with trees from Mr. Mr. Castario's building. And, uh, then we turn around here and it will come in and out through 106. So that reduces the number of cuts. And obviously, there's also an entry on Library Lane as well. Uh, so to fix that sum up, um, uh, at the moment, the zoning line is definitely in a panther modely. And, uh, we'd just like to rectify that so that we can go ahead and plan this out. I swear.
Are you suggesting one curb cut?
One curb cut to 106, not the curb cut of 100. That would be.
And the school states.
No, that one, that's. That was, that's most.
That's even extended with that.
Now, by the way, John, we'll be back before you for something. We have to address all of your specific issues.
This is only the zoning.
Okay, so let me, uh, address the main issue here, which is the zoning on the vision.
Yes.
And based on history, um, we had one for Rotron where they were doing an addition to a building and the zoning line went right through the building. And we could not process it like that. So we had to adjust the zoning line for the very same reason that it wasn't properly put the first way. Same thing occurs here, that when the line goes through the buildings, then he can't, we can't review the building because it's too different. So it makes perfect sense to change the zoning line.
So the building you're talking about, well, there's a couple in that. One is the library, which I just did, uh, and that's got part of the cut off by zoning line. And I guess these are the like garage sort of facilities.
Yes. But also the funeral home and stuff, so two of the voting subjects.
And there's a conservation issue on the front point, like, probably.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't vouch for my line. It's not like that at all.
So there's a big issue, obviously. Um, we don't wanna get involved in spot zoning. That's not what we want to do. So this is not spot zoning because we're basically correcting a, a zone line which should have not been there in the first place. As I just pointed out, the zoning came in after the building.
Empty properties should have been stored within, used for commercial purposes and, I mean, the lots or areas of this, that works to their own spots.
But, so that's the, that's the logic for. Before looking at a proven zoning line, uh, change. The, the thing that, uh, as I said, we have to be careful about spot zoning and this isn't that, but we've had requests for zoning changes that, uh, don't go through buildings and that would be spot zoning and that wouldn't be.
Right.
But this is a correction, uh, that makes sense. I believe the board would probably agree. You can ask them and, uh, it certainly makes sense to, uh, not have zoning line go through commercial buildings.
Right. And, yeah, and if anybody has any questions about spot zoning issue, I'm putting my, transferring that to all of you. The legal explanation of why it's not spot zoning. If we have to lose water sufficiently.
I'm starting.
Do I hear a motion or are we gonna send an email?
All right, what did you say?
Do I hear a motion or are we gonna send an email?
I move, we recommend to the town board that they approve this zoning change.
Second?
On the favor.
All right.
All right.
All right, thank you. We'll see you for your friend number. See you later.
Liz, just thank you for, for the town for coming on the comprehensive plan.
I was just explaining to Big Dan why I'm not.
Good girl.
Like.
How's it going?
They don't. Everybody wants to know. I don't.
I'm, uh.
He's on that.
I'm just, Ron.
Yeah. You know.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Is, uh.
Yes, Ron.
Roger here?
Monty.
We are on the next.
Hi, sir.
Okay.
Welcome. This is my office.
You saw, more than ever, attention to Dr. Moore. Who's always round up and pull up the bed. Traditionally, we've always. We're supporting the company and we always.
We can't get ready for it.
Because at least for recent ones, clearly they're like.
So I guess the question is, uh, how big is structure?
Okay, so I believe it's, and I will pull a rezone problem. Thirty-six panels of commercial law, each panel is about eight by four, seven thirty-one. So, three hundred, nine hundred, five hundred, please, please.
And it's not a pole or a zone.
Oh, yes, good. Okay. But that's where it is.
Yeah, I saw that.
And then.
There's no, no trees or. Ooh, new cut room.
New cut rooms.
Exactly. It's, it's the back of McDaniel going up the mountain, next to my garden and that whole area. Yeah.
Yeah, I've got it up there.
So it's basically like an open, you know, work ethic or brass, you know, regular. And how they mounted is they measured the poles exactly the right length, so it doesn't have to be level ground. It can be, it's not level ground. So they put the poles, it's like a rack. They put it out of the way. And so, um.
The question.
That's where it is. So it's, uh, yeah, I wanted them to put it a bit far from the house, which is up. They don't.
Which may change, but it's not gonna take a lot of trees.
No, there are no trees. It's an open area. So they're just in a position that they're best, you know, sunlight facing.
So in this area up here, it's in the city of Woodstock.
Yeah, so that's exactly, so it's an area where you can't, I mean, no one can see into our property, including any of my neighbors. It seems like a house, but I thought.
One of the suggestions we all say, I just can't reflect, we, I've been told or not, we assume or not, reflect this.
I assume they're not too. And I would have brought like the, uh, the person, the Evo Evolution, uh, energy people. Didn't come. I'm not such a technician, but it's supposed to be a good modern, new system.
I believe we've asked that question before, so, and we told they're not reflecting.
Really important question.
You know, they're black, yeah.
Yeah, the way you've got this mirror out here.
These, these are black. I don't know if that answers that. Black.
Blue, black.
They're dark. They're not silver. I think so. Yes, I think so.
So you're putting them up in this bare area here?
And I mean, if it gets moved, it'll still don't be okay.
The whole area is, is bare.
Yeah, I see.
So, yeah, so it's, it's going up there and, yeah.
I mean, I think, I think this is both graphics from like twenty-one.
There's, I couldn't tell. It hasn't changed in, that hasn't changed at all, actually. Yeah.
Do you remember?
Sloped, but not crazy.
There, uh, from, I think they start, lower one starts at two feet and then, yeah, they slope up and they put, like, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, like this. So. I'll just do my math. They go, starts two feet. Four feet and four feet or something. So it's a two feet, four feet, quarter figure angle. So it probably goes from two feet to four and a half. Five.
Do any of your neighbors see your property?
Yeah, no, none, none of the neighbors can see in and I can't see next. There's one neighbor in the winter where they go, I see their lights. But other than that, it's, that's.
What about down the mountain?
That's the down the mountain I'm talking about. The up the mountain, not at all. The up the mountain, not at all, because it's a private property. There are just two other towers in there. Wait, so it's only the ones that would be right off McDaniel that are down from, it's still quite a distance, so.
So downhill is this way, right?
Yeah, downhill is towards McDaniel, yes.
Yeah, when I look at contour lines, I never know.
Yeah, no, exactly. Yeah, I'm sorry.
When I look at the stream and that shows to me, there's a spring in that. Are you gonna be completely, then, can't defend it?
I hope so. That, that was the idea. Cause it's, um, I mean, this house, it's eighteen thousand, eighteen kilos.
Eighteen kilos.
Not eighteen thousand, but that's a lot. So that's what I use it. And that's a lot. My mother has a house, I have the very worst kind of human, which is based for electric. And I'm at the same time changing to heat pumps.
Yeah.
So I'm doing it both together. And I have a pool, which we don't use. So just to run a pool is not apparently very, it better, and I have a hot tub.
Hot water or something.
Hot water.
That's like a thumb up.
Yeah, but so the pool, we're not doing, you know, I don't need that. This is too much. And we have a hot tub. Yeah, so that, I, you know, my mother has a house, and my house, hers is bigger, closer to town, and mine is a lot more. I'm trying to figure out quite why. So mine averages like over five hundred, five fifty a month. And hers is like three hundred, three fifty.
So how does cars connect with yours?
Oh, no, I'm just, in my mind, it's, I, I just know both houses live there.
We just compare people.
In terms of energy efficiency, and hers, for example, is actually much, hers is a super whole house. So it should be less energy.
So you're not gonna be, you're not gonna need a battery, you're not gonna need a generator. Are you gonna, battery storage?
No, we don't have a battery store, so I am gonna have to.
Okay.
Yes.
I have learned the hard way that hot water and heat pumps have to be taken into account when you size them. And they'll tell you that.
Where did, where did you say?
I have learned the hard way that hot water, electric hot water heaters and heat pumps have to be taken into account when you size the generator. I just, well, they didn't tell me that on the heat pumps.
Anyway, uh, you're basically here before speaking, so you see a photo.
That's it?
Yes.
And, uh, I guess we've established it's not gonna be seen or, uh, be a problem.
And we've long since established that, you know, solar is something we want more.
A lot more, yeah.
It would be interesting to know that how reflective it is. I know they have test the tiles are matte. They are not effective at all. There are, that are reflecting. Never looked at mine. They're black.
Well, then, uh, I would say way further to you.
Board members?
No, sir. Some.
A second.
A second. Um.
I mean, the only reason it's gotten to a point that, but I have seen some solar panel systems that are bigger than twice this house.
Yeah, yeah, no, I don't, I get it. And I get it's, it's a view issue and it, yeah, that makes sense. I mean, I would, I wonder if you guys are gonna get a lot less requests now that the federal subsidy, like a lot of us were worried about getting it done by the way I'm here because, yeah. That, that subsidy is gone and the living aid is gone.
I'm gonna let the, the department know, that the planning board.
Yes, thank you very much.
And then at our next meeting, they'll have a resolution, so it's all signed, they'll have a special.
I appreciate your time. Well, it was the work you did. This is my first time for the, uh, open court, in fact. Although as a student lawyer, I represented prisoners in front of all of you. That are interested.
That's charming.
Yeah, it was charming. I'm very sorry.
It's ideal.
All right, thank you.
Thank you myself.
Thank you.
All right. That's nice.
That's it.
That's it, probably.
Journey.
We should probably.
Thank you, John, for.
We should probably request, uh, the solar panels in the future. I have a patient that not reflect, but that's a.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, it's like inspection yourself.
Usually we get those. This one I pushed in because he wants it done, so we can get his taxes and submit it to the register.
But inspection, you're right for you.
Yeah, it's like a specialty.
This was a different, yeah, it was a different company. All right, interment to Anthony Day, second.
Favor.
All right, hang on, don't worry.